Good morning again everybody and thank you for your patience. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. So we should be underway momentarily.
As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. Thank you for your patience. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is 10:20 AM and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. As you know we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to council chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, October 19th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viegosa, Weiss, Stein, Padilla, eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session, and before we begin, let me announce a couple of things. First of all, this is Tuesday and the first meeting of the week. I'd like to recognize Mr. Ludlow for our salute to the flag.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask everyone to please stand and face the flag and join in with me. I pledge allegiance...
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a religion and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Stein seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves, and Mr. Labange seconds.
Mr. President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, let's hold off on general public comment for just a few minutes. Members of the council, if I can ask for your attention, as you know, today's a big day, and we have a number of important matters on our agenda, especially items 1 through 7, which are matters related to the master plan of Los Angeles International Airport. What I'd like to do is to go through the agenda and dispense with consent items, that which we can dispense in about a minute. Anything called special is going to wait. We'll take items 1 through 7 concurrently together. When we get to that point, we'll begin with about a 10-minute presentation from the staff. There are a number of people here who wish to speak on the item, and so we'll conduct a public hearing as well, both for and against, people for and against items 1 through 7. We'll hear before then from Mayor Han, and then, just as a reminder, members, today's intended as a day for the staff presentation and to hear public comment. The council deliberation itself will take place tomorrow, so council discussion deliberation and a vote will be tomorrow in regards to the LAX master plan. Today, we are hearing from members of the public and staff only. So, Madam Clerk, the consent agenda, please.
Okay. Items 1 through 7 are being held on the desk. The items, next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have been held, items 8 through 17.
Members, items 8 through 17 are now before us. Public hearings have been held in committee on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings, seeing no such motion. Do we have any requests for specials? Monsieur Garcetti.
12 special, please.
12 special. I understand we have a technical amendment on item 12. Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none, on the balance of the items, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. President?
Those items are approved.
On 12, it's just to move the CDD report, because that was left, that was omitted in the report, so.
Okay. And if there's nothing further on item 12, let's open the roll on Monsieur Garcetti's motion. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are 18 through 41, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Members, 18 through 41 now before us. Any specials? I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. If there's no request for specials, Madam Clerk, I'd like to hold item 29 on the desk. On the balance of the items, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item number 42 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Remember, item 42 now before us. Any requests for calling item 42 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Next item is item number 43. Public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and I believe there is a card on this item.
We do have a card on item 43. Let's call that special. Next item, please.
And that would conclude the agenda other than items called special.
Okay. Coming back to items 1 through 7, remember, let's end item 12 forthwith. Thank you, Monsieur Garcetti. Coming back to items 1 through 7, again, the matters pertaining to the LAX master plan. We do have about a 10-minute presentation by the department, but Mayor Han is with us today, and I don't know what your schedule is like, if you'd like to go now, or you want to wait for the staff. It's up to you. Mayor Han, please.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you for having me here today. It's a great day. After more than a decade of hard work, we're on the verge of an historic moment for LAX, L.A. World Airports. And while your vote today will decide on whether majority of this council will vote to override the recent county decision on the LAX master plan, actually, your vote tomorrow, the real significance of that vote will be whether or not we're going to move forward to make our airport better, make it safer, or we're just going to have to return to the drawing board. So, again, this plan has been 10 years in the making, and we've needed an overhaul for probably 20 years. And overhaul is needed now more than ever, especially in a post-9/11 environment. We have the opportunity to move forward significantly, making it better and safer LAX. Plannin' has a great deal of support, as you see in this room, but certainly, I want to thank two parties in particular who stepped forward with great ideas, who helped shape the plan before you today. First, the Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank President George Kiefer and the Aviation Task Force of the Chamber of Commerce. They evaluated the plan and made recommendations to adopt Alternative D, also to create a more participatory process as far as the implementation of the plan would be. An important suggestion that they made, which we're going to implement, is the creation of a stakeholders committee, who will be involved throughout the design and build-out of the airport. But secondly, one of members of this body, Councilwoman Cindy Miskowski, stepped forward with her ideas in what has come to be known as the consensus plan. Her ideas were to revise the specific plan portion of the master plan in a way to have the council continue to have an important role in the design and build-out of the airport. We spent many hours negotiating the elements of the consensus plan, and I'm here to tell you that I certainly fully support it. You're going to hear from a number of people and groups today, but I want to highlight that the consensus plan has broad support within the business community, including the Chamber of Commerce, Central City Association, individual airlines, and the Air Transport Association. Also, it has the support of law enforcement, including the Sheriff of Los Angeles County, Lee Baca, who understands how important it is to have security improvements at the airport. Furthermore, the plan is endorsed by labor community, which is extraordinarily interested in making sure that Los Angeles International Airport continues to be the economic engine that it has been for the region. A lot of economic activity, whether it's right at the airport or not, is related to the fact that that airport is there and continues to be an important part of global commerce. So I want to thank George Kiefer and Miguel Contreras for coming together to form a labor and business alliance in support of the consensus plan. As you know, L.A. is a primary hub for domestic and international trade, particularly with Asia and our other partners on the Pacific Rim. If we're going to maintain this multi-billion-dollar level of commerce, obviously, LAX needs to make sure that it is a first-rate airport. It is not that now. Again, we've needed a major overhaul for many years. We need to add the latest technology, the latest security improvements. We want to make sure that LAX remains a first-class airport. But my primary interest, as you know, is to improve the safety and security of LAX, infrastructure, safety and security of the passengers, people who work and live near that airport. We know there was a foiled plot during the millennium that would attack LAX. Thank goodness, that plot was foiled. The individual was arrested as he came across the Canadian border. But since September 11th, we know even more that LAX remains a terrorist target. That's a fact of life. We've got to make sure that we keep the momentum up to make LAX a safer, more secure airport, and I hope that after you hear all the testimony today, that you'll move forward to vote to override the action of the County of Los Angeles, move forward with the consensus plan, and move forward towards a safer, more secure, more modern, better LAX for all of us here in Los Angeles. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning.
Thank you, Mayor Han. As a... As the next step, let me ask the staff from the department, Mr. Veragoso, so hold on, let me finish this announcement, okay? And then I'll give you the floor. Well, we'll next hear from the staff with about a 10-minute presentation. I understand the Mayor of El Segundo is here as well, so we'll extend him the courtesy of being the first speaker under public comment. And as an announcement to everybody who's here from the public to speak on this item, a reminder that there's been extensive opportunity for public comment and input at the airport commission level, extensive opportunity at the planning commission level, extensive opportunity both in the Commerce Committee of the City Council and the Planning Committee of the City Council, yet we're continuing to hear from you, and we suggest about 30 minutes to hear from people who are here for the proposals, and 30 minutes for people who are here against the proposals, so at least another additional hour of public testimony before the council's review on this. Mr. Veragoso, did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. President. I had a question of the mayor. Serious questions?
Not at this time. We're hearing from the staff, and then we'll hear from members of the public. The council discussion deliberation, as was announced earlier, is scheduled for tomorrow. So the council will hear and listen to members of the public today, and will be discussing and deliberating and voting tomorrow.
So we won't be able to ask the mayor a question today, is that it?
Well, I'm sure the mayor is willing to step aside and have a conversation with you, but at this point in time, let's hear from the staff.
We don't need to step outside. I wanted to do it here.
I'm not asking you to step outside.
Would the appropriate time to do that, Mr. President, be tomorrow? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Council discussion deliberation and vote will be tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before the staff makes their presentation, may I just have you make an announcement that I think we have an overflow crowd, and an overflow room has been created, I believe, in the Board of Public Works room, with a capability to show on the video some of the material that will be shown by the airport in presentation. And if we could ask, as some of the people either complete their speaking, to make way for some of the others, because I recognize some cards that have been submitted for speaking who are not in the room, and they may be in the overflow room, so I think we need to make plenty of time available for those who are speaking to get here if they are in the overflow chamber.
Absolutely. Thank you for that reminder. And for those who are interested, the Public Works Hearing Room is pretty much adjacent to the rear of these council chambers. Walk out the door, make a left, across the rotunda, make a first left, and you'll be in another spacious room just like this one. Okay? Stay.
Good morning. Thank you. I am Kim Day. I'm the interim executive director for Los Angeles World Airports, and we are here today to ask for council approval of the LAX master plan program. The last comprehensive update of LAX was completed in 1956. The last major upgrade of our terminals and airport roads was completed before the Olympics in 1984. In 1990, City Council authorized the LAX master plan work program, and it has taken us 14 years to get to this point. Our facilities are aging, they're overcrowded and inefficient. If we do not adopt and implement a master plan shortly, we will be faced with a set of operational, environmental, and economic consequences that will severely limit our ability to function properly, safely, and efficiently. At a programmatic level, the master plan addresses access to the airport, the constrained central terminal area, the outdated runways and taxiway system, the overcrowded terminals, while still providing for passenger safety, security, and convenience. The plan is the result of a great deal of thought and collaboration. LAWA is only one member of a broad partnership that includes the Federal Aviation Administration, the Federal Highway Administration, the Transportation Security Administration, our airline tenants, the city-elected officials, and the community. We examined an array of ideas and options. We analyzed more than 30 alternatives and sought unprecedented public input. In all, we conducted four public scoping meetings, more than 830 public presentations and briefings, outreach to all neighborhood councils, 21 joint LAWA and FAA public hearings, seven environmental justice workshops, and two public comment periods. The twin combined exceeded 415 days. The preferred alternative balances the public's call for no expansion and less impacts to the neighborhoods, with the airport's need to modernize and focus more intently on ground access, safety, and security. This plan promotes a regional solution to the air transportation demand, improves the level of passenger service, and addresses both community and environmental concerns better than the no-action, no-project alternative. That said, not everyone agrees and supports all the elements of Alternative D. In response to all the public outreach and voiced concerns, and working with the mayor's office, we were very fortunate to have Councilwoman Miskowski step up and design what has come to be known as the consensus plan. The consensus plan consists of a specific plan, an ordinance with teeth that is legally enforceable. While the master plan is a strategic framework for future development of LAX, the specific plan ultimately controls how and what elements of the master plan are carried out. Like other specific plans, the LAX specific plan contains triggers and trigger-related actions to assure analysis and public review and approval at specified points in implementation. In recognition that the master plan is the comprehensive result of years of analysis, including ground transportation, air quality, and noise analysis, the specific plan draws a line between the projects that have wide support and acceptance and those that are in need of additional analysis and vetting before the implementation, in order to provide further understanding and the basis for City Council to make more informed decisions. The line divides projects into two groups, the green light projects that can immediately proceed, and the yellow light projects that require more review.
Because I'm trying to listen to everything.
They're one step ahead of us, so let's be extra disciplined today, folks.
Thank you. It is important to note that the specific plan increases City Council oversight of all projects, not just the yellow lights. The ordinance provides for greater reporting, increased public participation, and a hearing before City Council on every project. It provides us the opportunity to base implementation decisions on real-time information, which is essential in an industry as dynamic as this one. I would now like to turn this over to Jim Ritchie, LAWA's Deputy Executive Director of Long Range Planning and Environmental Management, who will explain the plan in more detail and identify the green light and yellow light projects. Jim?
Thank you, Kim, and thank you, Mr. President, council members. I'd like to describe this plan in the following video on your screen. The major projects of the master plan that have general consensus, or the green light projects, are the west employee parking lot, the south airfield improvements, the intermodal transportation center, the consolidated rent-a-car center, the automated people mover system that connects the intermodal transportation center, the rent-a-car center, with the central terminal area, and improvements to the Tom Bradley, excuse me, international terminal. Each of these projects provide much-needed improvements to LAX. The west employee parking lot will be designed with a security checkpoint for all employees. The south airfield will have the addition of a center taxiway to reduce the risk of runway incursions. It will also improve circulation, reduce taxi times, and increase safety on the airfield. The intermodal transportation center that you see in the southeast corner of the airfield will serve as a connecting point for regional transit buses, future MTA rail access, and the Green Line connection. The intermodal transport... The intermodal transportation center will serve daily parking needs for passengers coming off the 105 freeway with more than 9,000 parking spaces. The plan will provide a direct connection to the Green Line station at Aviation Boulevard and Imperial Highway. Long-term surface parking lot B is expanded, with its users connecting through the intermodal transportation center, moving to the central terminal area. The automated people mover system will be on an elevated structure that will not interfere with the existing roadways. The automated people mover, including maintenance tracks, is built east of Aviation Boulevard, traveling north, then turning west down 98th Street. The consolidated rent-a-car center will bring together all on-airport rental car functions and conveniently in one place for the first time. The single point of business improves passenger convenience and increases efficiency for the rent-a-car companies. The people mover service from the rent-a-car center will eliminate more than 1 million shuttle trips from the airport roadways and the surface streets. The people mover system will connect the ITC, the rent-a-car center, directly with the central terminal area. Convenient people mover stations will give passengers easy access to the north terminals and the south terminals. The stations will be designed to separate passengers entering and exiting the trains and minimize crossflow. The Tom Bradley Terminal will be renovated for improved passenger service. The project will include the relocation of maintenance hangars to construct necessary taxiways, construction on the apron area, and new gates to the west side of the terminal. The new gates will improve the efficiency of the international operations to accommodate the new large aircraft. These contact gates will eliminate the need for the old-fashioned remote busing service that we have to use on the airfield today. These green light projects and improvements are widely accepted by the community as necessary to modernize LAX and bring it into the 21st century. They will improve ground access, airfield safety, and customer satisfaction. In the process, LAX will go from being at the bottom of the rankings in customer service to being a competitive premier international gateway airport. In addition to these components, an expanded flyaway system will exist, new flyaway remote terminals will be developed throughout the region, including downtown Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley, to further improve the airport access while helping to relieve congestion on our regional roadways. The other major projects that were briefly shown are identified in the specific plan and referred to as the yellow light projects. For these yellow light projects, the ordinance will require a specific plan amendment study, and in that study, traffic, aviation activity, and security components of the project are evaluated, along with any additional environmental analysis required by SEQA. These evaluations and analyses will include broad public participation, and then be considered by the executive director, the Board of Airport Commissioners, and finally, the City Council, which will make the ultimate decision on these projects. The consensus plan successfully provides the bridge from the LAX master plan to implementation. It gives the time and the process to evaluate and further review each project while keeping the elements of the master plan linked together in the SEQA document. As important, it maintains the federal approval part of the process. Alternative D responds to the public's desire that we do not expand the capacity of the airport projected at LAX and to foster a regional approach to aviation demand. This plan is designed to accommodate approximately 78 million annual passengers, or the projected level of activity that we will reach if no improvements to the airport were to be completed. By designing for this level of activity, measures are implemented that mitigate the environmental impacts that would otherwise go unmitigated under the no-action-no-project alternative. Alternative D is the best way to fix the serious problems we have, and it passes all of the rigid environmental tests. The consensus plan is the best way to move forward to implement with the most needed improvements while requiring additional study on the more controversial components. The recent events of the past June Board of Airport Commissioners, the City Planning Commission, and the Advisory Agency all unanimously recommended approval of the LAX Master Plan program documents, including the consensus plan. On October 6th, the Planning and Land Use Management Committee voted to recommend to City Council approval of the LAX Master Plan program. On October the 7th, the Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee also unanimously voted to recommend approval to City Council.
There is unanimous agreement that something needs to be done at LAX. Doing nothing is simply not an option. There are many competing interests striving for a solution, and Alternative D strikes the right balance. It has passed all the environmental tests, is the environmentally superior alternative, and is a project that can be built with airport revenues without impacting the city's general fund. The consensus plan provides the policy and the framework for implementation of the master plan, and with your approval of the LAX Master Plan program, we will be one important step closer in reaching the goal to fix LAX and ensure its continued vitality for this city and this region. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present the plan.
Thank you very much. We now... We'll now turn to public comment on this item. Again, we have set aside 30 minutes this morning to hear from members of the public who are in favor of what's before us, 30 minutes set aside for members of the public who are against. But I'd like to extend a courtesy to both Mayor Kelly McDowell, excuse me, from the city of El Segundo, and State Senator Richard Alarcon, two elected officials who are here with us today, if they'd like to come forward and offer their comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Honorable counsel, good morning. I am Kelly McDowell, the mayor of El Segundo. Last May, I had the pleasure of being introduced to this council by Councilwoman Cindy Msikowski. On the same day, we began discussions in earnest to find a way to reach an agreement between our city and your city to constrain LAX to its present capacity. The city of El Segundo is pleased by the cooperation and flexibility shown both by Mayor Hahn and Councilwoman Msikowski in coming to an agreement on the proposed LAX specific plan. And we're also pleased with the efforts that the councilwoman and the mayor have made personally over the last several months to advance discussions between my city and the city of Los Angeles. I'm especially encouraged by the progress that has already occurred between us. Those involved have demonstrated candor and cooperation that have helped build and sustain a sense of genuine goodwill between our cities. And in that context, the issues which face El Segundo and the region are complicated, but our concerns are simple to state. We must first constrain LAX to an annual capacity of 78 million passengers, and this can only be done, in our view, through a legally enforceable long-term agreement between our two-city governments. We must look closely at additional ways to make the Southern Runway complex safer, which do not increase adverse impacts on my city and other neighbors of the airport. And LAWA must do everything it can to adequately mitigate the adverse effects of any new changes to the airport, and to swiftly compensate its neighbors, and make them whole wherever appropriate and whenever it affects the quality of their lives. The one big key to a truly regional solution to Southern California's aviation needs is constraining LAX to its current capacity. Constrained at LAX to 78 map is what will make the region's airports grow, and LAWA will be the biggest beneficiary of a truly regional plan, because it owns and operates the biggest and best airports in the region: LAX, Ontario, and someday, Palmdale. All three of these goals belong in an enforceable, long-term agreement between my city and Los Angeles. Making a binding agreement between our local governments will make certain that these goals become reality and that the Hahn and Msikowski plans succeed. A binding agreement with the city of El Segundo, which has for decades consistently opposed the unbridled growth of LAX, will eliminate any doubt that the plans before you truly constrain LAX growth. It is our sincerest hope and our growing expectation that we can continue to find common ground for agreement and resolve the outstanding issues between us quickly, fairly, and for the benefit of all concerned. And while El Segundo keeps its options open and continues to oppose Alternative D in its present form, and asks you to uphold our appeal on the EIR, we are optimistic about the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. It's always a pleasure to come back to City Hall, particularly in these chambers where so much work was accomplished. And it's...I'm always reminded of, in these particular circumstances, of Gil Lindsay when he stood up and said, "I have friends on this side, and I have friends on this side, and at the end of the day, I'm going to vote with my friends." And so this is one of those issues where friends will have to disagree. The bottom line of this particular project is, I don't believe it's ready for prime time. In fact, the recommendations of the committees to the council floor are hesitant. They are calling for a number of yellow light projects, which clearly cause concern. Indeed, they are yellow because we are cautious as we move forward. We don't have a firm handle on those projects, and we're not therefore ready for the entire plan. I fear that this plan will be decided by the courts in negotiation between lawyers and court officials, and I don't believe that's what is intended when you establish a city government. This project has many projects that cannot be firm. If they are, it would, I believe, subject us to violations of the environmental requirements necessary for a project of this scope, and I believe that is recognized in the committee reports to the council. And so the question is, are we going to force this project forward on the public, knowing that there is no consensus? That a plan that is called a consensus plan is indeed a plan without consensus? A plan that relies on regionalism, a project that should be growing the prospects of regional unification to build a strong economy, indeed is going to separate our region in many ways. The entire county supervisors oppose this project. This is a regional project. As much as we would like to think that the city of Los Angeles is in control of this project, its impacts are indeed global. I believe that the federal government recognizes the import of LAX. They recognize that 400,000 jobs are related to the airport and its functions. They recognize $60 billion in economic impact, and therefore, I believe they can wait for a better project. And so I would urge the council to reconsider those yellow light projects, and let's come up with a firm plan. I don't think there's too much difficulty embracing the green light projects, but the yellow light projects are very problematic, and I believe they will throw the city into the court system almost immediately. And so, without going into great detail, let me just say that I believe that we should have alternatives fully considered. Many of the projects in E1, in the E1 proposal, are viable and should be fully explored and reconsidered. We do not have that opportunity if this project moves forward, and in doing so, we might lose the opportunity to build the safest and best project for Los Angeles. I also believe that much work needs to be done to look at alternative sites for alternative airports. And Palmdale, while it is a long way away, we should build transportation systems to make it closer. We should not be pushing San Fernando Valley traffic toward LAX. We should be pushing San Fernando Valley traffic in the other direction, north. So I believe this project ultimately will harm the city of Los Angeles. There's nobody who's going to oppose the jobs, there's nobody who's going to oppose the concept that LAX needs to be rebuilt. But how we rebuild it is critical. We should not be pushed by political pressures to a project that is incomplete at best. And so with that, I weigh in opposing Plan D and in support of reviewing fully Plan E1, which I think provides greater opportunities to build true consensus throughout the city of Los Angeles. And in doing so, I believe Los Angeles will stand on high ground with the rest of the nation, with an airport system that truly contributes to the United States economy, and most importantly, creates harmony and balance in our local communities. Thank you.
Hold on, folks, hold on. Shh. Look, if this is how we're going to be, it's going to be a long morning. You know? Don't make me go to 20 minutes each side. Okay, at this point in time, we're going to start with a general public comment. As I mentioned, we do want to allow for 30 minutes for those of you who are here for the project, 30 minutes for those who are against the project. I understand that a lot of you have also had an opportunity to testify previously, either in one of the council committees or one of the commissions that has considered these items. So I'm going to ask the clerk to please assist me by putting up a 30-minute clock. I'm going to ask each of the speakers to keep it as close to a minute as possible. Your previous comments are already in the record, and so you're just reminding us of what your position is today. I'll ask you to exercise some discipline, because the more time you take up, the less time there's going to be at the end of that 30-minute segment for other speakers who agree with you. So I'll go as far along in this stack as I can before we hit those 30 minutes, but when those 30 minutes are up, we are going to stop, and we'll take the other side after that. So let's begin by hearing from George Kiefer, Miguel Contreras, Carol Schatz, Michael Collins, Richard Slosson, Sergio Ralzcon, and Robert Dibley. If you'd form a line behind the podium, that may expedite our public hearing, and I'll read additional names as we go through the hearing. Go ahead.
Mr. President, council members, my name is George Kiefer, Chair of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. For some time now, it's been increasingly difficult to undertake major initiatives in the interests of the region as a whole. Our fractured regional government, sheer size, nimbyism, and lack of coordination are part of the blame. Unless we are able to reach consensus, whether it's on environmental issues, or transportation, education, water, or other issues, we will continue in a state of political, economic, and regional paralysis. It's a little bit like the frog getting into boiling water. It's something that doesn't happen overnight, but if you'll go to other regions of the country where airports are being remodeled with billion-dollar projects, you can see the difference. We have to make, take personal responsibility in our institutions for the public welfare. That is why we have joined with organized labor in a business labor, labor-business coalition to support this LAX master plan, Alternative D. We would have preferred long ago the original Reardon Plan, calling for a much greater size to the airport, a much greater capacity, but we prefer the practical to the perfect, and consensus is required in any region like this to move forward. This plan has taken our comments and others, and we have agreed to accommodate our views to those of others. I would say to you now, enough is enough. It's time to move forward. The business community has joined with labor in this and other groups to support Alternative D.
Council members, Miguel Contreras, the Executive Secretary-Treasurer of the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, AFL-CIO, and we're proud to be here with a number of union members in our audience today in full support of this alternative Plan D, working here with the Chamber of Commerce. Organized labor, organized labor is in the House because it's the right thing to endorse this plan, to be here and forge a new relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, to help this city, the city angels, to move forward. You know, we've been through this master plan. I sit as an airport commissioner, held many hearings on this master plan, and we know it's the right thing to do. Many of you in this room know it's the right thing to do, but it takes some political will on your part to get it done. That's what it needs. Decades ago, if elected officials did not move, this state would not have had its golden label put on it, stamped right on it, because it was political will that built the highways and freeways of California. It was political will that built the colleges and universities in California. It was political will, political will, that built the infrastructure that we enjoy. And that's what it's going to take here, political will, and put aside political ambitions, political agendas, and put forward good policy for the citizens of Los Angeles. Put forward something that we can be proud of, which is the number-one airport. Other cities are doing it. You fly- You fly, many of you fly in the horseshoe to other cities. You know the projects being done at San Francisco Airport, at Cincinnati, at JFK, at O'Hare. Billions of dollars being spent to upgrade and make their airport more safe and secure. Yet, how much time are we going to waste and not put a plan forward? So, the labor movement, encourage all of you, every single one of you who have come to us in friendship, to cast your vote in favor of alternative plan. Thank you.
You don't look like Carol Schatz.
I'm not Carol Schatz. My name is Victor Franco Jr. I'm Senior Vice President of Government Affairs for Central City Association on behalf of Mrs. Schatz, who had to take off. We are here, obviously, in support of the Business Labor Coalition. It's not very often that the business community gets together with our labor brothers and sisters, and I'll say that because we all are brothers and sisters. There are many issues that are before this council coming up in the next few months. But as you see, a lot of the city reinvigorating itself, reconstructing itself downtown, a good example. And then, you travel to other cities and see other airports going through that same metamorphosis because other cities recognize the value, the economic engine that their airport is. Well, we need to recognize that as well and so, I ask for your support of the LAX master plan and support this Business Labor Coalition. Thank you.
My name is Michael Collins. I'm Executive Vice President of LA Inc., the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I recognize that the issue before you gives a whole new meaning to the word "big." However, I'm going to, here to speak on a far more narrow perspective. LA's second-largest economic engine is its visitor economy. That economy yields $11 billion every year and supports 240,000 jobs. Today, and this is the central point, there is enormous and energetic competition for those dollars. In the past eight years, 14 cities have added direct international flights. J.D. Powers annually asks frequent global travelers to rank airports. Last year of the 22 major airports ranked, LAX was 20. The logical conclusion of this ranking is no mystery. The master plan and the improvements it brings goes to the heart of LA's capacity to compete for future visitor spending. The LA Convention and Visitors Bureau and its 850 members, thank you for your leadership and encourage your support of this motion. Thank you.
Our next speaker is, our next speaker is Richard Slosson, followed by Sergio Rascon, Robert Dibley, Jose Luis Sanchez, Dan Hagan, Alan Wayne, and Frank Clark.
Good morning, President Padilla and City Council Members. I'm Richard Slosson, Executive Secretary of the Los Angeles and Orange Counties Building and Construction Trades Council. And you are hearing the people here that are here today to support this program, this plan to move forward the proposal for a modern LAX. And you'll see them. I'd like everyone that's with the Building and Construction Trades to please stand up today and tell them who's supporting LAX. The building trades membership are your friends, your neighbors, your family members that live and work throughout the greater Los Angeles area. Our council represents 130,000 construction families throughout the area. We are here today to ask your support for the measures that are before you to overturn, first of all, the county airport land use commission's unfair and unreasonable vote to declare that this plan is out of compliance with a 1991 land use plan that the county of Los Angeles should have corrected over 10 years ago. They got the money to do it. We don't know where the money is, but they should get back to business and create a plan that tells about the new residents that live within the city of Los Angeles. The other thing I'm here to ask you to vote yes on these proposals for is the economics that are involved. The jobs, the thousands of jobs that will be created for not only people in the construction industry, but this modernization and safety plan will also support the over 300,000 jobs of people who work at the airport daily, that work for companies that ship through the airport, and all of those surrounding neighborhood jobs. This plan has been reviewed until it's turned upside down and inside out. Every aspect to this plan is supported by the building trades crafts. We have attended the meetings, over 50 meetings that I've attended personally, hearings, city council meetings, not only within the city of Los Angeles, but also in the other surrounding cities around the airport. We know that this plan has been completely vetted. It meets the needs of every community here that, it is the best plan for every community. It was said by a previous speaker that this plan might be, or the decision to go forward might be settled in court. I personally believe any plan would be settled in court. There are going to be lawsuits that are going to be filed. This plan is the best plan for the region. We should go forward, create the jobs, correct the safety problems at the airport, and move this program forward. Thank you very much for listening to my testimony today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to be here. My name is Sergio Rascon, Business Manager of Labor's Local 300. I represent over 8,000 members here in Los Angeles. And I had a speech already said, but practically, everything's been said by a representative from the building trades. And believe me, we have been there, as he said, for every hearing with all of our people, understanding the needs, not only to our people, but the needs to the people that are there already working. If we do nothing, we might lose some of the permanent jobs that you already have there. We might lose what is being called the most beautiful city in the United States. We don't need that. So, we urge the city council to keep that in mind and understand that we're here to support the city of which we live in, to make sure that the benefits stay within instead of going somewhere else and going over our heads and losing what we have fought so hard to keep. So, please, keep that in mind and vote yes for this alternative plan and along with the rest of the people that depend on this airport and the modernization. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rascon. Next is Robert Dibley, to be followed by Jose Luis Sanchez, Don Hagan, and Alan Wayne.
Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Robert Dibley. I am with the Air Transport Association, which is the national trade association for the nation's leading airlines. I am here today representing our members, including the LAX Airline Affairs Committee, Airport Affairs Committee, which represents all 80-plus airlines serving LAX. And you're going to hear from some individual members standing behind me as soon as I finish with my comments. We have, in the airline industry, have met with each member of this council during the past year. If you recall, last year, we met with you and raised some specific concerns we had regarding Alternative D. We have never questioned the objectives of Mayor Hahn's original plan of making LAX a safer and more secure airport while continuing to set a high standard for customer service. The challenge, however, was finding an acceptable flight plan, if you will, that would reach these objectives that all parties, including us, could agree upon. With a few course corrections, we now believe we are in the right direction. Three weeks ago, the airline industry came out and endorsed the Hahn-Missakowski consensus plan. We believe that is the best and only realistic plan to achieve our desired objectives for LAX. And we do it based on three guiding principles. First, it allows the airport to move forward on much delayed but much improved, much-needed improvements without further delay at LAX, such as the south airfield improvements and refurbishment of the Tom Bradley International Terminal. Second, it mandates additional analysis and environmental review on those proposals that are not as critical. And third, it ensures greater participation in the entire process by the public and major stakeholders, things that we in the airline industry have been pushing since day one. Mr. Chairman, for these reasons, the airlines believe the consensus plan is good for LAX and good for operations. It lets us move forward on those plans we agree upon, rather than letting our disagreements stand in our way and causing further inaction. And I might say that in terms of the cost of the green light projects, that is a major financial burden that will be placed upon the members of our industry, which in this day and age of the financial turmoil we're undergoing, is quite a step forward. So, based on that, we believe the Missakowski and Hahn plan should go forward. The airlines serving LAX strongly encourage this committee to approve this plan. With it, we can all point to pride at LAX. And I'll let members of our, our own individual members make a comment.
Mr. President and members. My name is Jose Luis Sanchez, Director of Governmental Affairs for Southwest Airlines. We serve Los Angeles International Airport with 117 daily flights. Southwest Airlines endorses the consensus plan for LAX for reasons of increased safety and security, as well as enhancements to the infrastructure. Southwest Airlines also believes that stakeholder involvement in the planning process envisioned by the plan, especially with respect to costs, is critical for its success. Southwest Airlines urges support of the plan. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Dan Hagan. I'm with American Airlines and we want to add our support to the consensus plan. We believe, number one, it places the appropriate priority on the, on the green light projects, which are so important for this airport. We believe, number two, that it creates an appropriate process for all the interested parties to be involved in the yellow light projects before they are actually undertaken. We want to thank, in addition to that, this council for its leadership, obviously specifically, Councilwoman Missakowski, Councilmen Cardenas and Reyes and their committees, certainly the hard work of this whole council on this issue, along with the mayor's office. American Airlines supports the consensus plan. Thank you.
Mr. President, members. I'm Alan Wayne of United Airlines, the largest operator at LAX. Along with our nine-star alliance partners, we account for 30% of the flight activity. Basically, we live there and the place needs work. We urge you to approve this plan. It will improve safety and convenience for your constituents, many of whom are our customers and employees, and ensure that LAX remains the economic force it is for the city and the region and must continue to be if it is to compete effectively with major airports, as you have heard, around this country. Thank you and appreciate your attention.
Mr. President, council members. My name is Frank Clark, Executive Director of Lac Tech Corporation, an entity that is owned by the 46 international airlines that serve Los Angeles. Our member airlines provide transportation to and from Los Angeles for over 10 million passengers per year, who generate a significant amount of income to the city of Los Angeles. Citizens from foreign countries spend three times as much tourism dollars as do U.S. citizens as they generate considerable revenues and supporting jobs throughout the city and throughout the region. We urge the city council to support the consensus plan as proposed in order to retain the role of LAX as a key international gateway to destinations such as London, Frankfurt, Tel Aviv, Hong Kong, Sydney, Tokyo, and Seoul, to name but a few. Equally important is the need to upgrade and enhance our airport in order to retain our role as a key U.S. gateway, recognizing the improvements already made to other competing airports such as New York's JFK, Chicago, Atlanta, Miami, and San Francisco. We thank you for your consideration and seek your support. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. My name is Rob Sharp from Qantas Airlines. Qantas is the largest international carrier inter-LACs. We operate non-stop operations from Sydney and New Zealand through to LA. 900-odd passengers each year, about 27 million pounds of cargo. $1.8 billion was spent by those passengers, 50% in California, about 30% here in LA, about $190 million. We've opened seven new direct flights in the last 12 months. We see ourselves as growing here in LA. These flights represent a significant tourism and commercial benefit to LA. We want to continue our growth here at LA and we also wish to be the first carrier to bring in the new next-generation aircraft, the A380. To do this, we need the consensus plan. Without the consensus plan, we cannot move forward. Any substantial delays could potentially mean operations moving away from LA to other cities. Improvements from the consensus plan that are critical are the moving of the southern runway by the 50 meters to allow the A380 to arrive and taxi efficiently without impacting operations. Gate upgrades are also critical to allow passengers to disembark from those aircraft. Qantas Airways supports the master plan and we look forward to working in partnership with the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me, let me call forward our next group of speakers. Tom Moxley, Bruce McDaniel, Danny Tabore, David Kirsch, and is it Sevin, Sevlin Lopez-Mendoza? Go ahead, introduce yourself, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for, thank you for allowing us to be here to speak in behalf of the LAX Alternative D with the consensus plan. My name is Tom Moxley and I'm a member of Ironworkers Local 433 here in Los Angeles. Along with my other brothers and sisters that are in this room and the other adjacent room there, I want to let you know that I support the approval of the LAX master plan and the consensus plan. After attending many hearings and reading the facts about the proposal, I and the members of my local union believe that this design and the consensus plan proposals will fulfill the needs of the cities, passenger, cargo suppliers, using the airport. As well, this plan will meet the environmental, economical, and security requirements for residents, workers, and business in the greater Los Angeles area. We want this plan to go forward. I'd also, I would like, appreciate your vote to overturn the Los Angeles County Airport Land Use Commission's declaration that the plan is out of compliance with the county airport land use plan. As you know, the county airport land use plan is outdated and no reasonable person would use the 1991 plan to make such an important decision. I thank you for your time, your vote, and your consideration.
My name is David Kirsch and I'm here on behalf of the Carpenters Contractors Cooperation Committee to show our strong support for the LAX master plan. Just as important as making it possible to have a more efficient facility and improving security for travelers is providing job security for the men and women of our region. Through the tens of thousands of good-paying construction jobs with health care and pension benefits, as well as the excellent training opportunities that will be created, this plan will go a long way to improve the overall well-being of our communities. This process will be felt deep down in the lives of men and women next door or across town, who will be able to go to a job where they are treated with respect and dignity for their hard work, building the infrastructure needed for our region to flourish. This is an investment in our future and the face of our future is right here and I would like our apprentices to show up. And again, we urge your vote in favor of the proposal. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the city council. My name is Daniel Tabor and since 1966, I've lived in Inglewood underneath the south runway approach to Los Angeles International Airport. Very few people in this room, more than myself, could have reason to oppose this plan, but I'm not here today to oppose it. In fact, I'm here today as a member of a coalition of community organizations, religious organizations, residents, block clubs, churches, and two school districts impacted by the operation of Los Angeles International Airport, the Los Angeles Coalition for Environmental, Economic, and Educational Justice. Since March of this year, we've been negotiating with LAWA around a community benefit agreement, a community benefit agreement that would guarantee that there would be strict mitigations of those problems that have plagued the communities of Inglewood, southeast Los Angeles, and Lennox since the airport began to operate big jets many years ago. It's our belief that litigation and just saying no was not the appropriate path to take when confounded by the possible modernization and expansion of Los Angeles International Airport. We recognize the true value as an economic engine, as an employer, and as a partner in the region that this airport represents. And for that reason, we've sat down at the negotiating table to have very serious talks and dialogue about what LAWA, what the city of Los Angeles, and what the other communities could do in partnership to mitigate those problems. We believe the community benefit agreement goes a long way in addressing the concerns that have been expressed about noise, air quality, the impact of air toxins, the impact on the educational process in local schools, and indeed, the quality of life in those communities. communities. We think that your vote today to move forward in this process, to override the opposition of the county, will continue the process that we've begun to make sure that the needs of these communities are addressed through this modernization plan and through your actions. We look forward to your positive support for the further movement of the modernization plan at this point. Thank you.
Order, please. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Bruce McDaniel, the Superintendent of the Lennox School District, and also a member of the Coalition Mr. Tabor referenced. We have about 7,500 elementary school students attending our schools. These are very poor students, 95% of them qualify for free or reduced lunch, 95% of them are Latino. All of our schools are within the 65 decibel noise contour. This creates impacts on our children every day when every one minute and 16 seconds a plane flies over and interrupts their instruction. We know that this causes learning loss, and we're very, very interested in mitigating that learning loss and the health effects from the close proximity, not only to the airport, but also to two major freeways. We've been working, as has been mentioned, with the LAWA staff in negotiating a community benefits agreement, and we're hopeful that the conclusion of that agreement, which is still in progress, will give us a guarantee that really those mitigations that we're looking for will take place. We need further sound attenuation of our schools. In previous years, when the only measure to sound attenuate was stuccoing over windows, we did that, but new technology would allow us to come back with double-plane glass, allowing natural light to come in and enhance their learning. Better filtering systems of the air conditioning units will make their health better. We're very, very concerned that we reach an agreement with LAWA, and then the FAA does not come through on their end and support that with funding. And one of the critical elements from our perspective is that with the City Council's support and with the LAWA staff, we get firm commitments from LAWA before the final vote, excuse me, from FAA before the final vote in December, that the mitigations that we're seeking will be provided. Thank you very much.
Geraldine Lopez-Mendoza.
Yes, that's me.
And let me read the other names. I got it right this time. Well, you'll be followed by Alfred Encinas, Kevin Norton, Tony Chantemino, and Emma Worthington.
Good morning. My name is Geraldine Lopez-Mendoza. I'm an attorney and policy director at Environmental Defense's Environmental Justice Project Office here in Los Angeles. Our organization, as well as several other environmental organizations who are part of the LAX coalition described, are seriously concerned about environmental impacts of LAX operations, particularly environmental justice issues implicated by negative impacts of air and noise on working families, low-income residents, and people of color east of the airport. Among other measures through our CBA, we have guaranteed reductions of carcinogenic emissions from diesel engines from onsite sources, such as construction and ground service equipment. In addition, LAWA is committed to conducting studies to increase community knowledge about toxic air emissions through an air emission inventory, as well as a study of operational impacts on human respiratory systems and hearing. These are environmental health measures that will benefit everyone who interacts with LAX, residents, workers, and visitors. I want to be very clear about this point, because I think it's been misunderstood. All of the items in our CBA are designed to benefit the community as a whole. No group or organization in our coalition will benefit monetarily from the execution of the CBA. It's also important to note that the CBA does not contain all of the mitigation measures for the master plan. However, it does include those that are designed to directly benefit those most negatively impacted and ensure participation in the implementation of those measures. The CBA will allow us to implement specific environmental measures and stand as parties to a binding agreement to ensure ongoing oversight and dialogue over mitigation and implementation between LAWA and the residents most heavily impacted. Thank you very much for listening.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the City Council. My name is Alfred Encinas. I represent the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. The Carpenters Council has followed this master plan and the issues surrounding it since its inception, so we're very happy to be here trying to bring it to a closure. We stand in support of this master plan. The Carpenters Council supports the LAX master plan because it is the responsible thing to do. The safety and efficiency of our airport system serves the good of the people and the good of our economy, and it strengthens our security in the area now more vulnerable in this new world. By approving this master plan, the residents and the visitors of Los Angeles will find that this City Council has done the right thing for today and for the future of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Chairman Padilla, honorable City Council members. My name is Kevin Norton. I represent Local 11 IBEW, the Electrical Workers Union. To give you an example how long this process started, we had 5,600 members when it started. We have 7,400 now. I'm here to ask, do you support the overturn of County Los Angeles Airport Land Use Commission vote declaring the LAX master plan out of compliance with the county plan? After reading articles about the county commission's vote and attending both hearings, it's clear that the airport land use plan was outdated and useless for making a decision regarding the appropriateness of the LAX master plan. With there being an extra 1.5 million new residents in LA County since the land use plan was adopted in 1991, there's no reasonable expectation that the county's plan could be used to estimate the effects of the airport master plan. Last, and more important for me and my members, we need construction jobs. We need leadership from this council, and I would like to commend Councilwoman Mizakowski, Honorable Mayor Han for their leadership on this issue, and we look to the council to lead and create the best airport for the best city in the world. Thank you.
My name is Tony Chantemino. I am the Executive Director of the Westchester LAX Marina Del Rey Chamber of Commerce. That's the one that looks at LAWA when we look outside our window. Our chamber was the first to support Alternative D and subsequently send Mizakowski and Mayor Han's consensus plan, because it represents a logical, even-handed approach to modernization and safety. On each level of testimony, we have previously voiced our support for the consensus plan, and we will not waste your time with redundancy. We ask for your support. Thank you very much.
My name is Emma Worthington, and I'm here to represent Unite Here, H-E-R-E, Local 11 in Los Angeles. I live in Inglewood underneath the flight plan. I also have worked at the airport for over 30 years. We're here, and we're here to support the CBA, and with the CBA, we can support the master plan, because the CBA allows and makes sure that we have support for the communities, that we have environmental impacts, that the schools are taken care of, that the children are watched over, that we have good jobs at the airport, which is most essential, because it doesn't matter if you have a job, if it's not a good job. We want to support the CBA and the master plan, but only if we can have all of these mitigating factors that are taken into consideration, that we have support for the schools, we have support for the communities, that we take care of the environmental impacts, because I understand and I know exactly what it is to live around LAX and to work at LAX. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have, we have 21 seconds left for Seema Salak, if you're here. Seema Salak? If not, then we'll add your card to the record. Oh, is that her coming? She'll be the final speaker on arguments for what's before us, and when she's done, we'll take a little bit of a stretch here, and we'll have our 30 minutes to hear from people who are against the proposal.
Good morning. My name is Seema Salak. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Orbach, Huff &amp; Suarez. I'm here on behalf of the Inglewood Unified School District. The Han master plan and EIR recognize that the operation of the airport has severely impacted the learning abilities of the children who attend the Inglewood Unified School District. The Han plan clearly states that its implementation would worsen the impact on the children attending the schools of Inglewood, and to quote the Han EIR, quote, "The effects on public schools associated with aircraft noise exposure would fall on schools that are located predominantly within minority and low-income communities." Under the Han plan, the children attending Oak Street School...
Can I ask you to wrap up soon, please?
I'm sorry?
If I can ask you to wrap up soon.
Okay. What is most disturbing about the Han EIR is that while acknowledging the impact on the students of Inglewood Unified School District, it does not allocate $1 for mitigation. The City Council simply cannot ignore the fundamental unfairness that this multi-billion-dollar operation visits on these children and their teachers every day.
All right. Sounds like we got into the other side of the argument here, so...
Okay.
Let me ask you to conclude at this time. We're going to take a little bit of a stretch...
Very, very quickly. The Inglewood Unified School District is involved in negotiations with a coalition of community members, environmental organizations, and representatives of workers, many of whom live in the Inglewood area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you to stop now, and I'm sure we're going to be hearing from some of those coalition members over the next 30 minutes. We now, all right, you guys have actually been pretty good. I'm going to ask for one more favor, because we have a packed house here today, and there's a lot of people who are outside of the doors of these chambers here that are trying to get in, because we're going to be calling upon them to speak, but they can't get in because we're more than capacity-filled. So if you have offered your testimony, I'd like to thank you very much and ask that as many of you as possible, you can go towards the overflow room and continue to monitor our proceedings from there, and allow those people to come in, so we can hear from those people who are against items 1 through 7. Thank you very, very much. Members, let's take a five-minute recess as we allow people to come in and out, stretch their legs a little bit, and we'll reconvene shortly. Okay, welcome back. The council is reconvening again. We've just concluded a 30-minute hearing from members of the public, addressing the council in favor of items 1 through 7 on today's agenda. We're now affording another 30 minutes for people who are here to speak against items 1 through 7 on today's agenda. And just as a reminder for those of you who have been in the public works hearing room and are just joining us in council chambers, we recognize that this public common opportunity is in addition to the ample opportunities that have been held, both at the commission level, between both the airport and the planning commission, as well as the council level, with hearings taking place in the Planning and Land Use Committee, as well as the Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee. So we will allow for 30 minutes. I'll ask the clerk for their help once again in posting a 30-minute clock. I will read through the names in batches, so you'll hear me call five, six, or seven names or so. I'll ask, as your name is called, to please form a line behind the podium so that can expedite our public hearing. Many of you have had an opportunity to testify previously to either a commission or a council committee, so I'll ask you to keep your comments brief, as close to one minute as possible, not only out of respect for the council as a body, but out of respect for the other... So for those of you who take up a whole lot of time, that means less people who are in agreement with you are going to get a chance to speak. So with that being said, let's begin. John Hess from Congresswoman Jane Harmon's office, please come forward, to be followed by Mike Gordon, Bob Hanitzer, Jerry Ramirez, Denny Schneider. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm John Hess. I'm Congresswoman Jane Harmon's Chief of Staff. She would otherwise be here today in person, but is returning to Washington to be a conferee on the intelligence bill. Congresswoman Harmon does not now and never has opposed the modernization of LAX. Indeed, her goal has been to advocate for those measures that make the airport more secure, cap growth at 78 MAP, and move us in the direction of a regional distribution of the airport load. Building on the recent RAND Phase 1 study commissioned by LAWA, it's clear there are steps that can be taken right now that, separate from the master plan and relatively low cost, would greatly enhance security at LAX. The Congresswoman urges LAWA to adopt those RAND recommendations. The compromise plan put forward by Councilwoman Mizakowski is a step in the right direction with its tiered approach, but the reality is, is that the council will be voting on not the tiered approach, but the entire master plan. And the master plan, as you know, contains elements about which there is no consensus, and in some cases, significant opposition, such as the Manchester Square Ground Transportation Center, that the Congresswoman too opposes as an all-too-tempting terrorist target. Congresswoman Harmon understands that there are concerns about the required mitigation measures in the master plan's EIR/ EIS, if the plan is not improved in its entirety, but she also believes that there is a legitimate and legal way to overcome those concerns. I believe you've all been provided with a copy of a letter from environmental attorney Jen Chatten-Brown, indicating that the EIR/ EIS can, in fact, be broken up, permitting LAWA to move forward with those portions of the master plan around which a consensus does exist. And if it's appropriate, I'd like to ask that that letter be added to the record of this hearing today. The Congresswoman believes that such an approach, coupled with prompt implementation of the RAND study's Phase 1 recommendations, and a timely completion of the Phase 2 study, would, in fact, make LAX more secure and allow most, if not all, stakeholders to come together in support of the project. Thank you very much.
Mr. President and members of the council, my name is Mike Gordon. I am the former mayor of the city of El Segundo. For the last nine years, I have fought for the development of a regional airport system, one that would allow people from throughout Southern California to fly from where they live and where they work, and do it in a manner that would allow for safety and security to be at its utmost. During those nine years, we first fought Dick Riordan's plan to expand LAX to an unprecedented level of 95 to 100 million passengers, because of the concerns for safety, and concerns for traffic, and pollution, and noise over the homes of those of us who live in the South Bay, and the west side of Los Angeles, and east of this airport. We fought this battle because we wanted the people in the Inland Empire, and Riverside, and San Bernardino, and Orange County, to have the opportunity to develop the airports closer to where they live and work, so that the people in East LA County wouldn't have to be burdened with traffic on the 10, and the 60, and the 605, and the 105 freeway. And we developed a plan over three years, that ultimately, over 125 cities, counties, and governmental jurisdictions came to support. SCAG adopted this plan. The LA County Supervisors adopted this plan. We defeated Mayor Riordan's program to move forward. We looked optimistically forward when Mayor Hahn was elected in 2001, when he signed a pledge stating that he would not support an airport plan that would call for the expansion of LAX. We've worked with Mayor Hahn now for almost three and a half years to adopt that plan, and sadly stated, we have not achieved that objective. It is a broken promise. Alternative D, make no mistake about it. For those of you that think you might vote for this plan, make no mistake, you will be voting for an airport expansion plan. A plan that will allow this airport to grow into the mid-'90s, 50% larger than it is today, and over 20% greater than the current capacity of this airport. That is wrong. That is fair. That is not responsible, and that is not necessary. Our plan and our recommendation is that we amend this plan, not end it. Let us all cheer together. Look at the Ground Transportation Center. It has no support. It isn't necessary. It doesn't necessarily have to be done for security. We have other means to go forward. Let's take the Ground Transportation Center out of the plan. Let's amend the transportation element. Let's take the extra two years, if necessary, to make it right and go forward properly. This will be LAX for the next 30 or 40 years. Why would we shoehorn the wrong plan forward, simply because we've said we've had enough time already? Let's get this plan right. And then, third, the issue of moving the southern runway closer to El Segundo. There are already 185 planes flying over El Segundo every month. How many more must fly over El Segundo and Manhattan Beach in the South Bay to say that it is wrong? Moving that southern runway without studying the other alternatives, the end-around taxiway, is simply not fair to the communities south of this airport. There is another alternative. And then, finally, the regional airport system. Each and every one of you on this council has said at some point, we support a regional system. Make no mistake about it. If you support this plan, you will have put the dagger in the regional airport system for good. The airports will continue to meet their capacity and their demands at LAX, and not consider the development of the other airports in this area. It is wrong not to consider that. And then, finally, as you look at the hundreds of the people that are here today in support of this plan, recognize that over 17,000 LA City voters who live near this airport have already signed our petition in support of this plan. What I ask each of you is to reach within yourself to provide the leadership for the people of Southern California. Let's amend this plan, not end it. Let's do what's right, and let's stand up together and cheer together as a region that we have put forward the right plan. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Jerry Ramirez, and I am representing the County of Los Angeles Chief of Minister at Office. The County of Los Angeles has repeatedly stated its concerns, which I will sum up briefly. The EIS/EIR is inadequate. The LAX master plan is inconsistent with the comprehensive land use plan. The LAX master plan is not a safety and security plan. The LAX master plan does not constrain growth at 78 MAP. The LAX master plan does not support a true regional approach to air traffic growth. Finally, in regards to the yellow light projects, the proposed Ground Transportation Center would impose unacceptable impacts on surrounding neighborhoods, as well as produce enormous security issues. The GTC and all the projects designated as yellow light projects must not be allowed to move forward. Many times over the past few years, the County of Los Angeles offered to meet LAWA and discuss concerns and issues contained in the LAX plans. Only in the past month, through the efforts of Councilwoman Cindy Mizakowski, have such meetings occurred. If the council moves forward today with approval of this plan, it will do so ignoring an opportunity for further negotiations. In conclusion, the plans before the council today will serve their stated goals only if the LAX master plan final EIS/EIR is limited exclusively to the green light projects. A mandatory future environmental review and a mandatory general specific plan amendment must be required to certify all yellow light components. If LAWA and the city of Los Angeles are truly serious about proposing the best plan for the people of Los Angeles, steps must be taken to effectuate this outcome. Thank you.
Mr. President, members, thank you for the opportunity to present this statement in regard to the proposed LAX master plan on behalf of Supervisor Antonovich. He would be with you here today, but as you know, the Board of Supervisors is meeting at the same time. Forty years ago, Los Angeles city fathers realized that the proper approach to dealing with the expected increase in air travel in Southern California would be to develop a system of regional airports, as opposed to relying on one central location. To that end, the city purchased land in Palmdale, Ontario, and Van Nuys for the development of additional airports to ease overcrowding at LAX. That concept is as relevant today as it was then. However, what you have before you today is the fifth version of a master plan that ignores the vision of past city leaders, and instead attempts to cram the expected growth our region will experience into a modernized LAX. Specifically, the compromise plan is linked to the flawed project template, Alternative D, and inadequate environmental information on which that project was developed. In June of this year, the Board of Supervisors asked that AC, Lazaretto, and Associates review the consensus plan, and Alternative E1 proposed by Councilmember Parks. In addition, we have asked that they examine and find as to the conformity of those plans with the county's airport land use plan. A copy of that report has been prepared for you. In August of this year, the county's Airport Land Use Commission held two hearings on the proposed master plan, finding that the plan was inconsistent with the county's land use plan. The commission found that noise and safety impacts would significantly impact two elementary schools, one high school, and close to 2,000 homes. These inconsistencies have real impacts on real people: students attempting to learn, homeowners attempting to enjoy their homes. In addition, they found that the plan will worsen air quality and increase traffic congestion on the 405 freeway, having a negative impact on Southern Californians beyond the immediate area surrounding LAX. LAWA representatives and others will contend that the existing CLUP is outdated, and that this somehow justifies the so-called consensus plan. While the existing CLUP may be dated, the document is still legally binding. It's ironic that LAWA, essentially an agency of the city of Los Angeles, would criticize the age of the CLUP, when several of the city's own general plan elements were prepared in the '70s and the '80s. LAWA's argument would only be appropriate were the city of Los Angeles to proceed to invalidate every developmental approval over the last 10 years due to its own outdated plans.
I want to give you all the time and respect you need, but just know that as the clock runs, it's running on everybody here.
In conclusion, the combined negative effects of this plan on the air quality and increased noise and quality of life for thousands of residents leads myself and the majority of the, and the entire Board of Supervisors to ask that you approach a true regional approach to solving our air transportation needs. Thank you.
We call upon Denny Schneider, to be followed by Bill Rosendahl, Flora Gilchristov, Angela Redock, Joseph Kalanen, and Kurt Curtis.
Mr. President, council members, I've spoken before you. I don't need to belabor all of the reasons why this is not an appropriate plan. I just want to highlight for you the fact that what you would be approving, you don't even know, because the documents aren't finished. We already know that it creates all kinds of problems in the community. We already know that it's a fatally flawed environmental review. But what you have to determine further is that what you can do now to make this airport safe and secure, you need to move out now. You've got part of a RAND study that looked at present. Don't make the decision on a plan before you get the rest of the answer. I just urge you, have the RAND study determine what it is that you are going to approve, and please, provide the documents in advance, so that we can even see them and make comments about them. There is no way to make them, because they aren't even available yet. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm Bill Rosendahl, and I live in Mar Vista, and I'm a candidate for the LA City Council. Three things. Number one, how can New York area have three major robust airports, and we only have one? Secondly, why isn't Ontario right now up here, rather than LAX, which can go from 7 million to 10 million and to 28 million? The monies have been approved. And three, what about security? We don't even have a RAND study. You know, this is ridiculous. We should take the green and go forward with it, rebuild that infrastructure there, so we can get the new jets going in there. We should support Ontario and a regional strategy. We should take the yellow and make it red. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Flora Gilchristov, and I too am a candidate for City Council, District 11. And during this time period of campaigning, I've been up and down this district, talking to many of the residents. And as I listen to them overwhelmingly, the residents are opposed to the current proposed Alternative D. This proposal does not supply adequate constraints on the expansion of the airport, and that is the problem. I am the Chair of the Brentwood Community Council, and I join several other District 11 neighborhood councils, community councils, in opposing this plan. Westchester Del Rey Neighborhood Council is the council that governs this area, where the airport will be. The Mar Vista Council, the Grassroots Venice Neighborhood Council, the Bel Air Beverly Crest Council. So many of you support neighborhood councils, and I ask you to listen to what these neighborhood councils are saying. Additionally, I am a public health nurse by background, and I'm very concerned about the health issues that our children all around the airport are enduring. Recently, I spent time with a professor at UCLA in education, and he has been studying the impacts on the schools, and there are many, many schools under the runway and surrounding. And make no mistake, these children and the adults who are in the area have real health hazards to deal with. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Angela Redock, and I also am a candidate for City Council, District 11. I also am a partner with my law firm, Collins Mezaro Redock &amp; Yu in Los Angeles, in the Century City area. I also serve in a number of civic capacities, including the Los Angeles City Transportation Commission, the Small Business Commission for the County of Los Angeles, and also protect consumers at the state level, serving on the State Board of Barbering and Cosmetology. But more important than any of that, I am a resident of Westchester and a resident of the 11th District, and I stand with my Westchester neighbors today in opposing Alternative Plan D and any purported consensus plan. Secondly, why isn't Ontario right now up here rather than LAX, which can go from $7 million to $10 million and to $28 million? The monies have been approved. And three, what about security? We don't even have a RAND study. You know, this is ridiculous. We should take the green and go forward with it, rebuild that infrastructure there so we can get the new jets going in there. We should support Ontario and a regional strategy. We should take the yellow and make it red. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Flora Gilchristoff, and I too am a candidate for City Council. And during this time period of campaigning, I've been up and down this district talking to many of the residents. And as I listen to them overwhelmingly, the residents are opposed to the current proposed alternative D. This proposal does not supply adequate constraints on the expansion of the airport, and that is the problem. I am the Chair of the Brentwood Community Council, and I join several other District 11 Neighborhood Councils, Community Councils in opposing this plan. Westchester Delray Neighborhood Council is the council that governs this area where the airport will be. The Mar Vista Council, the Grassroots Venice Neighborhood Council, the Bel Air Beverly Crest Council. So many of you support Neighborhood Councils, and I ask you to listen to what these Neighborhood Councils are saying. Additionally, I am a public health nurse by background, and I'm very concerned about the health issues that our children all around the airport are enduring. Recently, I spent time with a professor at UCLA in education, and he has been studying the impacts on the schools, and there are many, many schools under the runway and surrounding. And make no mistake, these children and the adults who are in the area have real health hazards to deal with. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Angela Redock, and I also am a candidate for City Council District 11. I also am a partner with my law firm, Collins Mezaro Redock &amp; Yu in Los Angeles, in the Century City area. I also serve in a number of civic capacities, including the Los Angeles City Transportation Commission, the Small Business Commission for the County of Los Angeles, and also protect consumers at the state level, serving on the State Board of Barbering and Cosmetology. But more important than any of that, I am a resident of Westchester and a resident of the 11th District, and I stand with my Westchester neighbors today in opposing alternative Plan D and any purported consensus plan. Now, many of you, many people have accused the residents of Westchester and the residents of the 11th District in general of not getting it, of being naive, of being, having the NIMBY syndrome, the not in my backyard syndrome. But believe me, we do get it. We are not naive, we are not misinformed, we understand the need to make LAX secure. We understand that LAX is the fifth largest airport internationally and the third largest airport nationally. We understand the importance of economic development and including labor in that development process. And in fact, we applaud the alliance between business and labor today and encourage that same alliance for a more moderate $3 billion project as opposed to a $9-plus billion project. Despite understanding all these things, we simply cannot stand in support of alternative Plan D. Because what you're asking us to do is to accommodate the needs of an entire region, and that simply is not acceptable. We must look at a regional plan that would allow us to accommodate the needs of Orange County and other areas surrounding Los Angeles. Now, we understand that millions of dollars have been invested into planning for alternative D, and that on some level, we may be afraid to stop and to listen and to reconsider what has been proposed. You know, we talk a lot about smart growth, but this really is not an example of smart growth because it does not take into account traffic and environmental impacts, it does not take into account the regional opportunities that exist. And most importantly, it does not take into account the valid concerns of the residents of the 11th District and in particular, the residents of the Westchester area.
If I may ask you to conclude, please.
So as a resident of Westchester and as a concerned citizen of our city, and as someone who loves Los Angeles and is passionate about Los Angeles, I stand with my fellow neighbors, and I ask that each of you, our elected council members, rethink this plan, think broader, think out the box, have the courage, have the leadership, and vote against alternative Plan D. Thank you.
Joseph Kalanen, please, followed by Kurt Curtis, Anton Ackerman, Nan Schneider, Eleanor Holm, Doug Ellers, and Dana Cope.
Thank you. I'm a homeowner in Westchester since 1959. Tomorrow, you'll be asked to make the single most important vote of your tenure as Los Angeles City Councilpersons. A vote for the consensus plan becomes a vote for alternative D if the plan is fully implemented. And that's exactly what the people of Westchester and Playa del Rey feel, that this plan will become fully implemented. When this is done, the taxpayers and the flying public of the city of Los Angeles will be committed to $11 billion project that will not significantly increase the passenger or the cargo carrying capacity of the airports in Southern California. The goals of a consensus plan are proof safety and security can be achieved for about $3 billion, see alternative E1. What we need is a new regional airport, a new major international airport in this region. Let's give the flying public something for their money. The addition of a major international airport is needed to meet the future demand for air travel in our region. At the same time, it will reduce the number of passengers flying out of LAX, making that airport safer, more secure, and less intrusive to the community surrounding it. I challenge you and the airlines to do this for us. The first step in accomplishing this goal is to vote no on the consensus plan. The second step is to become the leaders in an effort to establish a true regional approach to air transportation in Southern California. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm DA Kurt Curtis. As a former airport commissioner, I am 100% against the airport expansion plans, either Mayor Hahn's or Councilwoman Cindy Moskowsky's. At the last scheduled Board of Directors meeting of the Westchester Vitalization Corporation, it was voted to quote "not support" unquote Cindy's airport expansion plan. Westchester Vitalization Corp. was formed over 20 years ago to revitalize the Westchester area. It is incorporated as a nonprofit organization whose mission is to protect the quality of life for the residents and business of Westchester. According to the Saturday's Daily Breeze paper, ARSAC is planning a lawsuit. I have a check here for $100 for that fund. I urge you to vote no against this and save the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
I am Anton Ackerman. I'm a mechanical engineer with an aerospace background. I have worked on several large projects. I'm sorry to tell you that there are still a lot of gaping holes in this plan. For example, we have an airport that works very well. It's a nice system, it's efficient, it makes money. If you start a major construction project on that, you really mess up the things and you create a big gridlock. All of a sudden, you get construction going on, at the same time, they try to keep the things going on the airport, and you have a hell of a mess. Next thing what I worry about is that if there is an attack on the airport, airport will shut down, you have no place to go, and you create a complete economic disaster here because you cannot handle the traffic. There is absolutely a need for a second international airport, and I suggest that you take that seriously. You should also take very seriously the regional plan because that's the only way that we can get things together and do it right. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nan Schneider. Can I cede my time to my Neighborhood Council representative?
You can cede your time if you want, but we're going to continue going in this order. So if she's right behind you.
He's right here.
Okay. Otherwise, we'll get, your name again?
My name is Robert Ackerman. That was my father you just heard. Good morning, council members. My name is Robert Ackerman, and I'm a board member for the Westchester Playa del Rey Neighborhood Council. Our President Gwen Vuches could not be here today, so she asked me to deliver you our position on the LAX master plan. Our Neighborhood Council boundaries include LAX and over 55,000 residents and hundreds of businesses. Here's our position. The Neighborhood Council of Westchester Playa del Rey rejects LAX master plan alternatives A, B, C, and D due to their excessive costs and negative impacts on the community. The NCW PDR Board of Directors supports a truly regional solution for meeting Southern California's airport capacity needs by building out our airports in Palmdale and Ontario. While the NCW PDR Board has rejected the master plan alternatives presented thus far, the Board does support a safe and secure LAX and would be willing to work with LAWA, the airlines, and other communities in developing an LAX master plan which is directly tied to a regional solution with implementation budgets and schedules. Subsequent to the adoption of our position paper, which you should have a copy of, we adopted this about a year ago, we have reaffirmed our position several times. In addition, our Neighborhood Council has come out against Councilwoman Moskowsky's consensus plan. We voted twice unanimously against that plan, and Councilwoman Moskowsky was present for one of those meetings for the 21 to 0 roll call vote. The consensus plan does not limit LAX to 78 MAP as promised by Mayor Hahn, and the consensus plan does not eliminate the very elements to what we oppose in alternative D, namely the ground transportation center at Manchester Square and tearing down terminals 1, 2, and 3. And in conclusion, we've also written to the City Council to ask that the LAX master plan alternatives be reviewed by the City Council Budget Committee and that the City Council not take any action on the LAX master plan until after RAND has completed its security study on alternative D. Thank you, and thank you, Nan.
Thank you very much. Before, before you begin, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask for a little bit of indulgence here. I just saw Congresswoman Maxine Waters arrive, and I want to be respectful to her, the demands on her schedule. So I'll ask you all to take a look over my shoulders here. There's just over six minutes left on the public hearing. We'll hear from the Congresswoman, and then we'll, we'll proceed with the final six minutes of the hearing after hearing from Congresswoman Waters.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and members of the City Council. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm sorry I could not be here earlier. I just got off the airplane from Florida, but I wanted very much to be here today, to be a part of this most important debate about a project that has long-range implications for our city and our community. As you know, I have been involved in looking at this plan for quite some time. LAX and impacted neighborhoods lie within my district. For several years, I have closely followed the proposals to modernize LAX. The current plan, I certainly believe, is fraught with issues of security, capacity, cost, resident displacement, traffic congestion, noise, and health effects on local citizens. Now, I don't want to take up a lot of time except to say that this so-called consensus plan really does not represent a consensus, and let me tell you why. I think it's rather awkward to refer to it as a consensus plan because it is not a consensus. A consensus is an opinion held by all or nearly all. The consensus plan is opposed by all, five Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, the county's Airport Land Use Committee, Congresswoman Jane Harmon, State Assembly Member George Nakano, Alliance for a Regional Solution to Airport Congestion, known as ARSAC, Brentwood Community Council, Concerned Residents Against Airport Pollution, Grassroots Venice Neighborhood Council, Mar Vista Community Council, Encino Homeowners, Sherman Oaks Homeowners, the Westchester Neighborhood Association, Westchester Playa del Rey Neighborhood Council, Westchester Vitalization Corporation, the West Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. Elected representatives from El Segundo, Inglewood, Manhattan Beach, Rancho Palos Verdes, Redondo Beach, Santa Monica, and Torrance have voted objection to this specific plan. Additionally, all of the candidates for City Council District 11 reject the specific plan. Therefore, the current plan does violence to the word consensus. Let me talk about, a little bit about what's wrong with the plan. It is heavily biased in favor of construction of the ground transportation center. And I know you've heard a lot about the ground transportation center, and it's that which most of us are most opposed to. As you know, you have gone through something here in the City Council where millions of dollars have been spent on consultants, and LAX, LAWA, has spent millions of dollars on acquiring property at Manchester Square. And it's quite unfortunate for a lot of reasons. The millions of dollars spent on consultants that many of you objected to was this arrogance of moving forward with the expansion of LAX no matter what, in anticipation that they would finally wrap everybody up and roll them in and get their way. And I think the City Council should really take a second look at that and the continued expenditures moving toward the adoption of this plan. In addition to that, this ground transportation center presents a problem to all of us because, first of all, you're taking out over 6,000 units of housing. At a time when there's a housing crisis in the United States of America, and certainly in Los Angeles and Los Angeles County, we have lost much of the 6,000 units or many of the 6,000 units. In addition to that, LAWA started to buy up this property piece by piece, one by one, until it created a situation in Manchester Square where people who were living there were left with boarded-up housing and vandals and gang bangers and others entering these boarded-up units and making it almost intolerable for residents who wanted to remain in their homes to stay there. So the ground transportation center starts out as a great negative in our community. But in addition to that, the first RAND study said this does nothing to add to the security of LAX. As a matter of fact, it perhaps makes passengers more vulnerable. When you concentrate passengers in a ground transportation center, you're concentrating them in ways that if we're hit with a terrorist attack, striking that kind of center could take out a whole lot of people all at one time, just as the RAND study talks about the long lines and how they create a possible, a great risk to the passengers there. Without going into a lot of the other parts of this, because I know that my time is limited and you have a lot of other people, this piecemeal approach will lead to wasteful and duplicative construction. Now, I'm familiar with development and construction. First of all, you don't start out thinking that perhaps I'll develop Part 1, and if there's opposition to Part 2, which depends on Part 1, I won't do Part 2. Perhaps I can do Part 3, but I can't do Part 4. It's all one plan. It's all one plan. And the fact of the matter is, this business of lulling the City Council into believing that there will be opportunities to come back somewhere along the way and stop parts of it that they do not like or you do not like, just doesn't make good sense. It is not logical. And I think that we should all agree that either you're going to do it or you're not going to do it, and this piecemeal approach does not make good sense, is not logical, and in some way, is kind of taking us for granted and making us believe that we're winning something when in fact, we're not. I am opposed, I'm opposed to the plan, and I think even though this has been going on for a long time, and there are those who would argue, we cannot afford to go back and have to go through the environmental impact study process again. It's too long and it's too costly. Mr. President and members, a lot of people's lives are at stake. We live in the flight of these airplanes. I live in Vermont No's. The planes come from the east, straight across Vermont No's, across Inglewood, or they're coming from the opposite direction, or landing in ways that the whole South Bay and many parts of Los Angeles are negatively impacted. This will only allow for more expansion. I know. This is not supposed to be an expansion plan, it's supposed to be a security plan. Well, that's rather clever. After 9/11, a lot of people are so-called doing a lot in the name of security, but this is simply expansion by another name. I would ask you, I would ask you to please slow down, not to adopt this so-called consensus plan, particularly since there's an investigation going on. This plan is involved in the pay-to-play investigation. I would think you would want to know more about that. I think a credible case has been made about the expectations of those who plan to make a lot of money on this development. I have a great respect for organized labor. I'm perhaps one of the biggest supporters. I'm the one who led the fight in this country, starting with the California State Legislature against plant closures. And so I stand firmly with trying to protect laborers so that they can have decent pay, so that they can have good benefits. And I work in the Congress of the United States trying to make sure that all of our trade agreements protect workers and laborers. But we're different on this plan. I know that you have organized labor here saying it's all about jobs, but what price jobs? I think that we can talk about how we can secure the airport, because there's room for securing the airport with a lot less money, somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 to $3 billion, not $11 billion. That's extraordinary, it's expensive, and it's outrageous. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to ask everybody to please come back to order so we can finish our public hearing on this item. Those of you who have spoken, you've had the courtesy of being listened to in a quiet environment. I'm going to ask for the same for our following speakers. Again, Eleanor Holm, followed by Doug Ellers, Dana Cope, Judy May, Art Garcia, Robert Dalton. Go ahead.
Well, Eleanor Holm, Westchester. On that note, I agree with everything that Maxine said, and I ask the members of this council to remember what you saw on that board. That plan is what is expected of you. You're going to be agreeing to something right now, but in the end, that plan is what they want you to build. And let me tell you, have you ever been down that 405 trying to get to the airport? This plan, to me, looks like a great plan for Palmdale. Let's slap a sign up, LAX Palmdale, and all of our global neighbors will want to go to LAX. Well, it's LAX Palmdale. Let's attach a rail line, which we should have done 15 years ago. Ruth Galanter brought it up. We discussed it in our area. Nothing was ever done. How about Palmdale? How about Ontario? Let's get a regional approach. LAX is not the place. And the labor unions will have beautiful homes for all of their people that are in construction out there. Palmdale is beautiful, it's wide open. Right now, we have no low-income housing. Out there, there's plenty of room for it. Let's do it. Thank you.
Come on, come on, all you guys in the back. I need you to behave, all right? We're almost, we're almost done.
My name's Doug Ellers. I'm a 53-year resident in Westchester, so the airport is nothing new to me. People that build the highways have been working for about a year now to come up with something that is going to be obsolete before they get the concrete dry. And I'm afraid what you're going to do if you sign on to this alternative D is that you're going to find that it's obsolete when you get through. I'm not at all against the unions and all the workers that are here today, and I hope that you don't make a judgment based on the number of people that showed up for each side. But someday, you're going to build in Palmdale, and I think that day is now. I'd hate to be in your position and spend a lot of time and money for something that's going to be obsolete when you could be doing the same thing in Palmdale and really get the job done right. Thank you.
Thank you. Eleanor Holm?
I'm Dana Cope from Westchester, and I agree with our Congresswoman Maxine Waters, and thank her for being here. We really cannot accept this plan. There are so many things wrong with it, drastic things wrong with it, that to accept the consensus plan would be entirely wrong. We have had some estimates that this plan could be 88% more than the $11 billion. And how much of that are the airlines that are going broke are going to be able to support? I think it's going to end up, the city will end up having to pay for some of this. The unions, I strongly support. Any contract that is less, that includes that the unions, that the jobs should go to local workers, that should be an That should be in any contract. But they must understand the jobs can be at Ontario or Palmdale or anywhere else, and they're still going to get them. The environmental group that is asking for environmental justice, they should get what they have been asking for. They should not be held up at gunpoint to accept alternative D in order to get what they should be getting already. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Judy May, followed by Art Garcia.
Hi.
Two minutes left.
I'm Judy May, and what I was going to say has already been said. I'd like to give my minute to Gary Glass from Windsor Hills to show that this is not a NIMBY situation.
Okay. One minute, 52 seconds.
Yes, sir. I'm Gary Glass from the View Park and Windsor Hills and United Homeowners Association. We are also against this proposal. I actually grew up in the Westchester area, and I saw what the airport did when people complained about noise. They actually purchased their homes. They used to be beautiful homes along the coast side. Now they come and they want to go ahead and secure the homes by putting in soundproofing. Now we're having small commuter planes come over our area, and when you complain to the FAA, they say we have no control over these small aircraft. Now, I think you should have learned a lesson from 9/11, saying that we shouldn't really be allowing this yellow light project going, and you're actually gonna be treating it like a yellow light at a traffic signal. I don't think you should be accelerating your foot under the pedal to get through with it, but you should actually be stopping and taking a look at it.
Thank you. Art Garcia, one minute left. Mr. Garcia?
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the city council, I'm on the Board of Directors, AHP Drawlinger Company, a real estate company in Westchester, and I'm also a resident of Culver City. As you know, approval of this so-called consensus plan is really approval of Plan D in two phases. The media reports that Plan D would cost $11 or $11.6 billion, and the consensus plan with $3 billion. Tomorrow, when you're discussing this project among yourselves, I think you have the responsibility of getting to the fact, knowing what the facts are, and just how reliable, how realistic this is $11.6 billion or $11.3 billion. When was the cost, when was this cost estimate made? And who made the cost?
Mr. Garcia, if I can ask you to wrap up your comments, our time is expired.
Also, the source of funding, how it would be funded. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My apologies. We have a number of cards, as we had at the beginning. It was gonna be a half hour to each side. I'd like to read in the record, Robert Dalton, Patricia Hamilton, Jennifer Koslu, excuse me, Harry Rose, Martin Rubin, Ron Hoffman, Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, Lawrence Kirkley, Barbara Lickman, I believe, David McCarthy and Susan Yoon, Mike Stevens, John Bowman, Diane Sembrano, Cecile Carpio, Mike Stevens, Mike Stevens, and Gary Geis. We're all here on the record against, and that closes our public hearing for today. Half hour each side. So with that, we will continue the item until tomorrow, which we will take up deliberations, colleagues, directly. I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange for an introduction.
Yeah, if we could, real quick here, a special delegation is here from our sister city of Guangzhou, China. Please welcome Dr. Wang Yanghe, Dr. Sheng Xingli, Ms. Wang Bing, and Sheng Xueseng. Please welcome to the city council from Guangzhou. Thank you.
Welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm very glad to be here. We are come from Dalian. It's a north city. It's located northeast of China. I'm here just a few minutes, but to give us very deep impressions. I know the decision-making procedures how to do in America. I'm here, just want to say a few words. This visit to Los Angeles, I feel very happy here, developed a lot of than before I visited here. And I sincerely hope the Los Angeles people and the municipal government will develop the contact with our city. Dalian is a beautiful city, and it's an industry-based city and a seaport city. We have many good names. It's a soccer city and fashion city, and we have very good seafood. I hope, and of course, we have very good golf course. I sincerely hope my friend here in Los Angeles cities will come to visit our city, do your business, and cooperate with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Wang.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'll go take a picture.
Again, welcome to Los Angeles. Xie xie and xie qian. All right, our next item is item number 29.
And, Mr. President, just to let council know, on item one, items one through seven, there are two amending motions that have been distributed, and those will also be on the agenda for tomorrow.
There are two items, colleagues, amending motions for item number one. We will take those up tomorrow, just to reiterate. Next item, please.
Item number 29 was called special by Mr. Padilla.
Okay. Item 29, Mr. Padilla, is before us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, just wanted to quickly call your attention to this item. This is item number 29, in light of the fact that, as we speak, city attorney--
Excuse me, Mr. Padilla, for one second. If I can please ask folks to take their conversations, please, outside. We need to continue to conduct today's business, and we'd respectfully ask you to please take the conversations you're having on the side aisles outside of chambers. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I was saying, colleagues, as we speak, our city attorney, Rocky Delgado, is convening a press conference in South Los Angeles where, as a result of some sting operations, they are moving forward with enforcement actions on some local gas stations that have been found to be selling counterfeit, or should we say, black market cigarettes. Item 29 today is get another action of putting monies into this black market cigarette trust fund account that was established by the council just a few months ago. And as we discussed then, the purpose for it is really to put a dedicated pool of dollars together for the city attorney and LAPD to be able to ensure compliance for the existing laws as it pertains to sales of tobacco within the city of Los Angeles. We know the burden on the healthcare system that tobacco has generated in our society. Aside from that, we know that counterfeit tobacco products, not only don't comply with the current regulate, federal regulations in terms of quality, but because they're more physically dangerous to people, layer on top of that, the violence that ensues from illegal sales, the loss of tax revenue to the city, this is a real problem. And the action we're taking today is adding $32,000 into the account. Doesn't seem like a big chunk of money, but it is significant in light of the enforcement actions that we can bring about when we have dedicated staff and resources at this problem. And today's press conference, just another example. So I'd ask for your support of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. If no one wishes to be heard, Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 43 was called special for card from the public.
Okay. Item 43, I'd like to ask Jim McQuiston to come forward, if Mr. McQuiston is still here. If he's not here, we'll enter that into the record that Mr. McQuiston was here, and we'll vote on the matter. Closes public hearing, so let's open the roll. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That item is approved. Yeah, Mr. Weiss? Fourth with on that item, please, Madam Clerk. Okay.
Mr. President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Now is a public hearing. I'd like to invite Robert Chervo, Elinda Wright, Greg Wrights, and Danny Gliberman forward. Are any of those individuals here for general public comment? Okay. If not, we will close public comment. So if you can talk to the sergeant at arms behind you for general public comment. Why don't you come forward to the microphone and if you'll just hand it afterwards, go ahead and you can speak right now. If you'll just identify yourself for the record, please. Thank you.
Well, my name's Mike Stevens, and thank you. And I'm president of a group called LAX Expansion Now, and I'm not gonna speak on an agenda item. I'm gonna speak on something else such as El Toro. You know, El Toro could be acquired by LAX. There's a land, there's a land purchase of El Toro Air Force Base beginning in January. And if you take a look at that bidding proposal, you would be able to purchase El Toro for $1.5 billion, 1.5. And that would be even less than that because it would be 20% on the dollar. Now, this council would not do what LAX would. The reason why I bring this up is, is because you have an issue dealing with pay-to-play and Mr. Ted Stein and Mr. Troy Edwards. And where that comes from is that the parking garages are going to be eliminated in the interior of LAX under the proposed master plan. Now, I'm coming to how this all works together. And what happens is, is that when you eliminate those parking garages, people are going to be parking at the hotels off-site, no longer onsite parking. And those lease contracts have all been acquired by parking, parking agencies, companies that park cars at the hotels. So anyone that has a parking garage or has a lease contract with any of the hotels is gonna make out like a bandit, because the parking garages alone at LAX generate $1 million a year. If you were to purchase El Toro, you could keep things the way they are, build an airport at El Toro at 20 cents on the dollar, 20 cents on the dollar, because you would be able to use the PFC, the PFC Passenger Facility Use Charge money for 80%. You'd be able to outbid anyone. Runways are there, you'd build your terminals, things would stay the way they are, and everything would be great. But the reality is that if you take a look at Jennifer Oldham's newspaper article dated, right here, dated September 18, 2001, she can tell you, it tells you all about the parking garages. And if you, and if you also remember, January 2005, the auction of all parcels at El Toro will commence, and November 2004, you'll have to start submitting your bids. So I leave you with that. El Toro is still alive, it can be built, and you can make all the money in the world the city of Los Angeles can with the help of LAX. And thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. That closes public comment for today. If we can go on to the next order of business.
Next item, Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, let's post and refer those items.
And there are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Friday, October 29th, to arrive at 11:30. And November 16th and 17th, those are all for personal business, and a motion is required on the request for October 29th.
Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Zine seconds, and Mr. Weiss is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Tuesday, October 26th, and Friday, October 29th for city business. Motion is required on October 26th.
Okay, Ms. Grul moves, Ms. Hahn seconds, and she's excused for that date and excused the other date.
Councilmember Lindell requests to be excused Wednesday, October 20th, to arrive at 11:00 a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, he's excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Any announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Colleagues, I know we made the announcement repeatedly earlier today, but for those watching at home or listening on council phone that may be interested in the ongoing deliberations of the master plan, today we heard well more than an hour of public testimony. Tomorrow, we will continue the discussion with the actual council deliberation and a vote. So for those who are interested in still monitoring the issue, you're welcome to come to council, to City Hall tomorrow, and listen or watch from home. But the discussion continues. Tomorrow, members, I'm sure it's gonna be a lively discussion and a lengthy one. So just wanted to remind us all of that.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, if I could please, Mr. Labange, another announcement?
Tonight is the second anniversary of the Edendale Grill, an old historic firehouse in the Silver Lake District at 2838 Rowena, and it's very successful to see an old city building sold to the private concern where they restored it, and now it's a great restaurant, the Edendale Grill at 2838 Rowena.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, can I please ask everybody in chambers to rise for adjourning motions? Okay, adjourning motions, colleagues? Mr. Labange?
Members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Mildred Singleton. It was an excellent basketball and track athlete and an Olympic athlete, a U.S. women's high jump champion in '53, '55, and '56, and a gold medal winner in the Games in Melbourne. She was relatively unknown person who achieved such greatness. And after her great work as an athlete, she resided in Pasadena and was a great member of the Pasadena School District as teaching physical education for over 32 years in the Pasadena School District. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Mildred Singleton, a great Olympian and a great Southern Californian.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, it's rather apropos today, given the hearing we just had and the area filled with Westchester residents, that I asked the council to adjourn in the name of Mary Lou Crockett. She passed away just Friday at the age of 67 after a lingering illness. Since 1964, Mary Lou has served Westchester tirelessly. She provided leadership to the first community plan adopted for the Westchester Playa del Rey area in 1974. She represented homeowners to obtain noise standards for California airports. The California Airport, the California now has a noise watch over airports. Mary Lou was a member herself of the Board of Airport Commissioners from 1978 to 1984. And then she was, she left that and was asked by Tom Bradley to head up the Board of Library Commissioners from 1984 to 1993, where she helped oversee the building of the Central Library. And I know that personally Doug, who was a member of the library with her, really enjoyed her and helped, worked with her in terms of following her leadership on the library. She was founder of the Westchester Playa del Rey Historical Society, and she was president from 1989 to the present. And she also served as president of the Westchester Vitalization Corporation. Her additional community involvement includes being honorary mayor of Westchester from 1989 to 1990, citizen of the year in Westchester in 1991, and a active member of the Westchester LAX Chamber of Commerce, as well as Loyola Marymount University and its Continuing Education Advisory Board. She's survived by her mother, Lorene, her daughter Patty, Patty's husband Glenn, and their two children, Jacob and Kyle. A memorial service will be on November 6th, and I can assure you that I think everyone in Westchester will turn out for that. And very much like Mary Lou, Patty has asked that those who want to make contributions, make a contribution to the community organization of their choice, which serves Westchester and its community and its neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. Other adjourning motions, Ms. Perry?
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Jasper McNeil, who was born on September 4th, 1937 in Hollybuff, Mississippi. Jasper attended public schools in Mississippi and at an early age joined the New Zion Baptist Church. He met and married Leertine Jones on August 1st, 1954, and they had four children. He moved to California with his family in 1956, where he worked for various companies, and later he became employed by the Aluminum Company of America, where he worked faithfully for 37 years and retired in 1994. In 1963, Mr. McNeil joined Revelation Church Apostolic Faith located at 8229 South San Pedro, under the leadership of the late Ella Howard. He served as chairman of the Deacon Board. He served as assistant superintendent of the Sunday School Department and as an interim vice president for the Board of Directors. He is survived by his wife of 50 years, Leertine, his brother Steve McNeil of Detroit, his son Charles, his stepson Willie, his 13 grandchildren, nine great-grandchildren, and a host of nieces, nephews, aunts, uncles, cousins, and friends.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two. First is Joseph Martin Jeffries, passed away October 9th. Joseph Martin Jeffries passed away after a brave fight with patriotic, pancreatic cancer. He was born on February 9th, 1937 in Chicago, was graduate of the University of Illinois, and a communications engineer with GTE for 37 years. His family moved to Los Angeles in 1973 and had many happy years together. He was an unselfish, generous man, knowledgeable about many things, and always eager to learn more. He was a man of strong opinion, convictions, faith, and spirit. He loved movies, music, good food, laughter, and the marine world. He was deeply loved and will be greatly missed by his family and friends. He is survived by his wife, Althea, also known as Dahl. He is survived by his wife, Althea, also known as Dolly, his daughter Michelle, daughter Karen and her fiance Randy, daughter Linda and husband Rudy, his son Joe, his grandchildren Ashley, Rebecca, and Caitlin, also survived by her brother George, his sister Angelina, Mary Ellen, Dorothy, and Doris. May Joseph Martin Jeffries rest in peace. My other adjourning motion is for Eugene Jean Dow Jr., passed away October 11. Jean Dow was 88 years of age and founder of the Theater Arts Department at Pierce College. Was born August 26, 1916 in Newberry Park, Massachusetts, Newburyport, Massachusetts. Served the United States Army in North Africa and Europe during World War II and awarded seven battle stars. Was all-around, multi-talented man who played the piano. He was a director, writer, and composer, was the primary force in construction of the campus state-of-the-art performing arts building at Pierce College, which was completed in 1981. He'd be greatly missed by his family and friends, and he is survived by his wife Ellen of 53 years. May Eugene Jean Dow rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, just to reiterate, tomorrow will be more LAX. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.